Welcome, everybody here. It's a special meeting. Item number four on our agenda is deliberate and act on the agreement to hire lawyers regarding claims and assignment of claim, Plaust Dunn LLP. Claims for damages for power generating equipment manufactured by Wardzilla Finland. Mr. Berry, or whoever.
We're a pro-tema commission. What you have in front of you is an agreement, and we do have RPS on hand to address this, and I will let Kathy address this to you, but we anticipate a subrogation agreement with attorneys as far as recovering uninsured losses related to the Wardzilla generating unit. And we do have Kathy McQuerry, president of RPS Board, who's worked on this.
Hopefully, you guys have had an opportunity to review this. What we bring for you tonight is a resolution that the RPS Board did approve, asking for your approval and signature of this approval to hire the attorney and the proration agreement. I did hand out from Bob Orburton with our attorney's office in Albuquerque, his opinion as to how this came about and how he feels it's a good agreement for RPS and for the city of Ratone. And just as a background, to remind everyone, we did settle with Hartford Steam Boiler at the full maximum insurance rate. What this does is Hartford is going into subrogation or going after subrogation with Wardzilla to recover their costs. And if there's any additional costs outside of the full insurance value that we incurred, which we have, and we'll share that with Mr. Dunn, yeah, Mr. Dunn, so that he knows what those are. Hartford Steam Boiler has hired him. There is no cost to RPS out of pocket, period, in this agreement, because he's going after Wardzilla for Hartford. We're a secondary, which they will, if there are any claims or anything that comes back through the litigation, that will come to us. Hartford will front all of the attorney fees and litigation fees, and after that settlement, if there's any recovery, then those fees will be paid back to Hartford Steam Boiler, and they will get a percentage based on, and the example that they give in this is actually just an example, saying since we don't know what the true cost of that new unit is going to be, we're basing it on what Zachary had indicated they thought it would be. Obviously, that number can change. So at this point, we're looking at a prorated of that settlement coming back to RPS of 16.63, I believe is the number, out of total settlement, that we could recover back from Wardzilla through this litigation. So our part, what we do is provide them with information, the attorney's firm, with information that he might need to win the case, and also whatever losses we might have over and above the insured amount. So, and Mr. Orburton feels that it's, you know, a win-win for the city of Ratone and RPS, since we have no out-of-pocket costs and no way that it's going to cost us anything unless, for whatever reason, we decide that we're just going to bail and not continue with the litigation. So with that, if there's any further questions, I would have to answer them for you.
No questions at this time. I think it's a win-win situation for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, then, I would entertain a motion to accept the agreement to hire the lawyers regarding claims.
And the proration agreement as well.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to accept the agreement to hire lawyers regarding claims and assignments of claim, Plaust Dunn, claims for damages for power generating equipment manufactured by Wardzilla Finland.
Do we add the proration?
Along with the proration.
Along with proration. I second that.
We have a motion in a second. Trish, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes. Item number two, or item number five, deliberate and act on Resolution 2015-34, a resolution amending the net metering tariff. Mr. Dibble's here to talk to us.
Thank you. What I have, I tried to get this down to one page for you. Commissioner Chavez, you know, I try to go with numbers, text, and pictures to increase the possibility of communication. As you guys all know, all of us have been in municipal government, electric utilities, water, sewer, garbage, all are accounted for on its enterprise fund. And the underlying concept of that is we're supposed to run these activities like business. In fact, in many cases, the private sector does these activities, not government. What we see here, and I know you guys are all aware of it, but this documented the, it's a history of the kilowatt-hours revenues and customers over the last five years, and we've had consistent annual losses in all three categories. So far this year, as of yesterday, year-to-date, we're running .9926 below what we did last year on our daily power, daily kilowatt-hours. So, you know, so far this year appears that the trend is continuing. Now, when I mention this to some people, they say, "Well, that's really not a problem, because when you use less kilowatt-hours, you buy less purchase power." And that's true. That is true. And if that were 100% of our budget, that would be significant. But it's only about 2/3 of our expenditure budget. And the other third is comprised of personnel, debt service, capital, and operating expense. And those things continue on totally unrelated, except for our ability to try and curtail them. But they're not related at all to the factors that cause this decline in kilowatt-hours revenues and customers. One of the things, when I came here last June, immediately, one of the large public entities in the area approached me and wanted me to meet with a solar consultant, along with Sammy and David. And they wanted to install solar power on two of the larger public buildings in town. And I had been around a couple weeks, but I was puzzled as to why we would want to do that, when we're losing load and losing money and losing customers. And I called up Farmington, my old haunts, and talked to electric director there, and he sent me his rate tariff. And their rate tariff, they, I modeled this amendment after that, the reason that where we hold it to, where we change it so all customers are not exceed 10 kilowatts. Now, in the picture below, we have, currently have 17, soon to have 18, solar customers in the system. And I graphed the 17 here, and what I've done is I've taken their average monthly amount that their solar systems generate and put back into the system. And there was concern early on that this change to put a 10-kilowatt ceiling on new generation facilities that would be, solar facilities that would be built, would be retroactive to our customers, current customers. In reality, all 13 of our residential customers are already below that. And the two that are above that are commercial. One is barely above it, and one is an example of what I didn't want more of the first month that I came here and was approached. I imagine if we had gone ahead and worked with those folks, we would have had two more bars that were very, very long up here. And we can't, RPS's position simply is, we want, we want to provide solar for a reasonable consumption of residential customers. I think that under the National Environmental Policy Act, that is a good strategy to have if you want to stab the poke. I deliberately copied exactly what Farmington does, because they have more lawyers and engineers than we do on staff. And if they get in trouble, we can learn something from that about our policy. And I think if we got in some kind of challenge over this, they would also be available to help us. I feel this is a reasonable approach in our situation, because regardless of the Clean Power Plan and all these things swirling around us right now, we still have a business board. And I think, I think the board is very concerned, our average customer doesn't use a lot of electricity and cannot afford to put in a solar system. And solar is going to grow, and the more it grows, the more potential subsidy the non-solar people, customers, acquire because of the solar customers. Now, all the solar customers, I collect, we collect the data on a monthly basis, and there's never a month that goes by that they don't need RPS to make it through the month. Nobody is self-sufficient. They're interconnected with us, but they need us. But the other concern we have, this subsidy I'm talking about takes the form, and the people are with us 12 months of the year, they're contributing a better, greater percentage to our personnel costs, to our operating costs, capital, and debt service. And I think this is a nice balanced position, recognizing NEPA, recognizing what the federal government wants to do, and still engaging in sound bits in that process. So with that, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Our system is not a give-and-take, so that when the solar customer has excess solar power that he's not using, that it comes back to us. Does that create, they're using RPS lines and equipment, does that create a hazard, a safety hazard or any kind of hazard? For example, the lineman goes to the pole to work on it, he assumes, they turn off that grid, so his grid is dead, but if this power coming from a solar coming back to the line is live, does that create a safety hazard?
Yeah, my former electric director in Farmington, Lon Anthony Richards, who was president of the American Public Power Association, told me that was her greatest concern about distributed generation, is our distribution system was designed to run one way, not two ways. And there are situations, a major one in Farmington right now, the hospital wants to put in a 1.9-megawatt solar field, and that would be something that you'd have to be extremely careful with as far as the Farmington lineman being involved with that. But, yeah, that's a, that's a real concern. In fact, she probably knows more about that than this than anybody I know, and that was her dominant concern. She stressed, you have to follow NEPA. You've got to be responsive to what the feds want, but I think this proposal is responsive to what the feds want.
No further questions? Thank you, Mr. Dibble.
Thank you.
With no other questions, we will accept the motion to accept Resolution 2015-34. Do we have another question?
I ask to sign in. Can I ask you?
Sure.
Before you go.
Sure.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners, managers, citizens. My name is David Wetting, and I come to you as a citizen, not associated with any organization. I have been working to promote sustainability and resiliency of the built environment for most of my professional career. I believe we must make decisions on how we exist, so that we do not prevent other future generations from not existing. We need to be guardians of both available renewable and non-renewable resources, and we must make wise decisions. Tonight, before you, is the request to reduce the allowable size of power generators to connect to the city's electrical system. Most of these people are using renewable energies. Most of those renewable energies are photovoltaic or PV panels, as we have just heard. The question came up a moment ago about safety. Safety is a very big piece, but the law is very straight, and it says that if you put in a PV system on a house that's connected to a grid system, when the grid size goes down, the PV system disconnects automatically for the safety of the line workers. That is a requirement. All equipment that is installed in this city right now meets that requirement, so that if the grid goes down, the solar no longer provides electricity to the grid, it cannot, because of the equipment that's installed. Now, there are equipment pieces that are called island converters, and these island converters will allow the generator to use the electricity locally, but it will not put it out to the grid. And that is a piece of equipment that can be installed, and some have already been installed. In the late '70s and early '80s, the cost of providing solar conversion was very high. It was north of $30 a watt. Back in the day, in 1983, I coordinated solar photovoltaic educational programs and demonstrated over three days, using the SolarGenieOne PV trailer, and this is solar cells on a trailer with batteries, that you could actually provide electricity to run radio stations, entertainment stages, and Major League Baseball infield PA systems. I worked with the mayor of Baltimore, the governor of Maryland, local architects, engineers, and builders, to educate them on the viability of using solar energy and renewables. Today, Maryland is a leader in the mid-Atlantic area. Over time, they have learned to provide electricity to a growing population without increasing their electrical distribution system. The cost of PV panels has actually dropped to $1.25 by 2011. So we dropped from $30 to $1.25. Today, it's actually less than a dollar a watt. Efficiencies have increased, and now they're up in the mid-to-upper 20s. Research is already showing that there's 40% efficiency conversions out there. Currently, coal-fired power plants have an efficiency somewhere down in the less-than-20% range. With the growth of all these affordable technologies, the Public Regulatory Policy Act of 1978, PERPA, was passed requiring power providers, such as RPS, to purchase excess power from grid-connected systems at a rate equal to what it costs the power provider to produce the power itself. Net metering is the most common method, and it basically involves using a meter that spins one way if the electricity is going out onto the grid, and the other way when it's coming back from the grid. At the end of the month, if you use more electricity, your system has produced, you're paid retail price for the electric. If you produce more than you've used, the power provider pervades the extra electricity at its avoided cost. Net metering is a policy designed to foster private investment in renewable energy. The Energy Policy Act of 2005 required state electricity regulators to consider rules that mandate public electric utilities make available upon request net metering, and that is so. We do have the 10 KW for residential, and we do have the 25 KW for commercial. The current proposal is to reduce that to only 10 KW, period, no matter whether you're residential or commercial. This will hinder economic development in the county, in the community. A renewable energy standard establishes incremental targets, and renewable energy standards are programs that are created by the state, and the state actually has a mandate of 20% by 2020 for investor-owned and cooperatives, that 20% of their electricity comes from renewable energy. Since Ratone Service is neither an investor-owned or cooperative, they're not mandated by the New Mexico Public Regulatory Commission to use any renewable energy, provide any credits, or to meet any of the state-imposed goals. But they could sell all of the solar credits that is listed in their chart, but currently they're not. Renewable energy credits are a non-tangible energy commodity in the United States that represents proof that 1-megawatt-hour of electricity was generated from an eligible renewable energy source. Solar renewable energy certificates are credits that are specifically generated by solar energy as compared to other renewables. New Mexico has a renewable portfolio standard, which calls for 4% PV by 2020. Now, I just got to finish saying that 20% needs to come from renewables. 4% needs to come from PV. The rest are coming from other renewables, biomass, wind, hydro, other things. They also have a mandate of 0.6% distributed generation, which basically means in-state generation by 2020. They would like to have more power generated in-state by 2020. Renewable energy initiatives the state offers include several tax incentives, which include advanced energy tax credit for businesses, renewable energy production tax credits, solar market development tax credits. Credits are available to individuals, sole proprietorships, agricultural enterprises, and tax credits specific to geothermal and other things. There's property and sales tax credits, and most importantly, utilities are required to offer net metering, which we are. Ratone Public Service is a municipal-owned utility and not under the regulation of the New Mexico Public Service Commission. The PRC regulates investor-owned and cooperative-owned. They assume that municipal utilities are regulated by the citizens that live in the service territory. Unfortunately, most citizens have no knowledge of how or why they should require their municipal utility to participate in matching the state goals imposed by the PRC on investors. They rely on their local commissioners, such as yourself, to guide the municipal utility to provide electricity in a manner that will be sustainable and affordable. The Ratone Public Service has developed a rate structure to ensure that they can pay their loan obligations, employees, equipment, installation, and maintenance of their electrical distribution system. Additionally, the rate structure includes the cost of electricity purchased from outside sources. Roughly four years ago, the rate structure was adjusted to update the cost of operation and purchasing, and will probably be updated within the next six years, if not sooner. When RPS purchases electricity from out-of-state, they must purchase three times the amount of electricity needed to be used by the city, due to the fact that 2/3 of electricity is lost in production and distribution. It is well documented that it's more efficient to have local production and distribution than depending from outside resources. DOE has many government research projects that document that statement. We need to move toward a decentralized production system and create more interconnected microgrids to ensure resiliency for quality of life. We learned during the track fire how vulnerable we can be during a disaster. If the track fire had changed directions and affected the Borough Canyon power line, we would have been in real trouble. The only other power line available to Ratone is from the south, and it has capacity limits. We did use the power line from the south, but only because it was for a limited time only. Having lived in a major populated area which has lost its ability to distribute power for over 10 days, I understand the effects of what happens when electrical power distribution goes down. I propose the city commission review very carefully how the municipal electric company plans to provide services to its citizens, and that there be an open public discussion for all the options available. RPS is currently evaluating how to use settlement funds from the now-defunct Wardzilla unit. Now is the time to evaluate how to generate electricity locally through the use of natural gas and renewable energy. If the city were to construct a solar array and sold shares to its citizens, that they could invest in a reliable renewable generator, and they could sell the renewable energy certificates that are generated to offset the cost. There are many utilities that buy solar RECs, renewable energy certificates, to help them meet their state mandate. Since we don't have to meet the state mandate, we are free to sell all the RECs that we can. The PJM Interconnect, Pennsylvania, Jersey, Maryland interconnect, is one of the nation's largest electrical grid interconnections, and it has conducted annual auctions of RECs for the last six or seven years. Each KW of solar installed in this community could have their RECs sold to bring in more money to the local economy. If we trim it down, then we trim down our economic development potential. We could construct several smaller and more efficient natural gas generators that will meet our needs when the solar systems cannot. And the solar, when the solar is met, our needs, when the solar can meet our needs, the power generated by the natural gas generators could be sold to support other utilities, such as a peaker plant, which is why Wardzilla was made in the first place. Installing several smaller units rather than one larger unit allows for more efficient production units and system redundancy. This community once made money by selling a commodity, coal, outside of this town. Currently, the economics of coal extraction is not profitable, so mines close their doors with a drastic effect on our local economy. If we begin to sell a commodity like solar renewable energy certificates, we could bring in money to our community. We are rich in solar radiation striking our part of the world. We need to invest in converting it into a profitable commodity and not restrict economic development. The decision you make tonight must be more than one of expediency. We need to consider the effects of the guidance you provide to RPS on our future of our city and its need for independent, sustainable energy production. I hope you will reject the proposed change in the current net metering agreement, instead direct the municipality-owned utility to explore other options that I have presented. More solar installations will increase economic development for our community and provide more opportunity to sell a commodity outside of the city, which will bring money in. Rather than be short-sighted, let your decision tonight help to secure further sustainable economic prosperity for our community. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the commission?
Do you have any rebuttal of any that was given?
I'll be brief.
Thank you.
In terms of economic development potential... In terms of economic development potential, the, the resolution does maintain an existing escape clause from being totally bound up, in that it allows the general manager on a case-by-case basis of, you know, if, certainly it is not our intention to throttle economic development. But it is our intention to reduce the, the concept of entitlement above ten, ten thousand kilowatt hours a year. The second thing, we are under regulation by a state agency. The New Mexico Finance Authority carries our debt. We have a debt coverage ratio financial test that we have to meet. And in our current financial condition, we are barely there. The truth be known, maybe a little under barely there. So we have to be careful. I think that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dibble. Any other comments from the commission? No at this point. I would just like to state that RPS meetings are held the last Wednesday of the month, and they are open to the public. And I know they will listen to anyone that comes and sits and wants to present before them. So I would invite anyone to, to attend those meetings and bring ideas. This time, I would entertain a motion to either accept or not accept the resolution amending the net tariff.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to accept the resolution amending the tariff tariff.
We have the motion to accept the resolution amending the net metering tariff. We have a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Trish, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
I'm unsure.
I'm going to just abstain.
Okay.
And Mayor Pottam Scott?
Yes. Resolution passes through. At this time, there is no other business to come before the commission. I will...